Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 23 meeting of the Hadley Select Board. We're going to start our meeting this evening with a public forum. And that public forum is hopefully going to be a session where you'll have the opportunity to ask questions and we'll be able to educate you on the upcoming town meeting warrant articles. So first of all, we just want to welcome and thank everybody who's participated in the process, all the municipal employees, our volunteers, school maintenance over here at Hopkins, as well as Hadley Media. So again, just as a reminder, the intent of the forum, as we want to be clear on this, the idea behind presenting the forum is to provide voters with an overview and a context for the special town meeting coming up next week in August on Tuesday, to improve voters' understanding of the individual warrant articles, of which there are four, and offer voters an opportunity to ask questions. We want to be clear what we're not intending to do tonight. We're not intending to take any vote favorable or unfavorable. We're not intending to provide any group or individual the opportunity to advocate for a particular article or to speak against a particular article. The reason for this is we can't supplant town meeting. Town meeting exists by law for a reason, and we need to make sure everyone has the opportunity to conduct a fair and above-board town meeting next week. Okay? So please refer to the public forum handout for rules and procedures. Just as a background, some of the challenges we've been facing, and for those of you who are regulars at town meetings, you have heard this messaging before. We are continuing to use some level of free cash to balance the budget. Revenue in town has been constrained in large part due to the gas mortaring that has been beyond our control. We do not expect to see any relief from that until possibly 2020, maybe 2019 if we're lucky. But Berkshire Gas has the backing of the Department of Public Utilities at this point, and that's the way it's going. We're also trying to balance departmental services needs within the confines of Proposition 2.5, but at the same time, address increased concerns about public safety staffing, our information technology infrastructure, which, to put it bluntly, is virtually nonexistent for most municipal employees outside of the school department. We have significant capital needs that, you know, we have a capital planning committee that's been working on making sure that all of those needs are identified, and the list is long. We'll be obviously addressing some of those larger projects with this town meeting, but we don't want to forget about everything else that's still out there, including the DPW infrastructure, et cetera. We have been functioning without a human resource department in the town, something that exists in most organizations, but it doesn't currently exist here in Hadley, nor do we have an information technology management department. And these are things that we continue to talk about. They would be additional services, and quite frankly, I think over the years, they've been somewhat lost in the equation because those services primarily benefit municipal employees. And we have always focused externally on the ultimate consumer, which are the residents and business owners here in town. So those are just some of the challenges we're facing as we move forward into this town meeting, the regularly scheduled special town meeting that will be on October 5th, and as we move forward into the fiscal '19 budget season. So with that, I'll turn it over to David Nixon, and he's going to review a few slides for the other relevant related to taxes.
Thank you, David Nixon, Town Administrator. I'm here to provide a little bit of context before we get into the four articles that are on the warrant for next Tuesday right here at this room at 7:00. So just some basics. We're going to be asking decisions from the voters that are going to affect your taxes. So it'd be helpful to have a review of what tax the tax structure looks like. And what we have here is a, I sometimes call it the layer cake of taxes. It's, this is the usual model for most cities and towns in Massachusetts. It's true for Hadley, it's true for Somerville, it's true for Irving, it's true for North Hampton. That our taxes are put together in a pyramid of choices. The first layer, no.
I'm sorry?
The first layer on the bottom, by far the largest part of that is the base levy of the, of Hadley, representing about $10 million worth of taxes. On top of that is the next one where you can increase by 2.5 percent. That represents about $253,000. And then finally, we have new growth. New growth is anything that adds value to the town, any remodeling, any new buildings, any upgrades, anything that involves electrical permit or a plumbing permit or a building permit. And right now, we're estimating that that band there is going to be about $142,000. And then finally, we have the top part of the layer cake, and these are expenses that the town has incurred by voter choice above the limits of Proposition 2.5. By far, the majority of these are long-term borrowings that will be retired at the end of the debt service and will go away. That band there represents $1.1 million at this point, and it covers the senior center appropriation. It covers the appropriation for the fire substation. It covers debt that we're already paying off, having to do with the schools, with other buildings, with other projects, anything within the general fund that we're borrowing. It's this last lit part of the layer cake, the very top, that we're asking the voters to make decisions in three of the four articles on Tuesday night. So the decisions that you're making on those articles affect your taxes. You'll be going above, if you approve this, you'll be going above the limits of Proposition 2.5, but only for the life of the debt service, whether that be one year, or 20 years, or even longer, 30 years. If I could have the next slide. So how do we compare with other communities? Hadley has one of the lowest tax rates in the Commonwealth, ranked number 55 from the bottom, so there are approximately 300 cities and towns out there with a tax rate which is higher than Hadley's. Hadley compares favorably in terms of its tax rate with surrounding communities, so that list there, Gojin, Hatfield, and North Hampton and Amherst, we compare favorably. Hadley has been able to do this because we've been very careful and judicious with our spending and with our financial management. In a 2013 report from the Department of Revenue, Hadley's average single-family house paid 30 percent less taxes than the Commonwealth average, and 16 percent less than the average of the Pioneer Valley. So a lot of prudent financial planning and careful spending of taxpayers' money has kept your tax rate low and your tax burden low as well. If I could have the next slide. One index of our careful financial management is how others see us, and this is our standard for bond rating. And as you can see, from 2007 to the present, we have steadily been increasing and improving our bond rating. Right now, we're rated at AA+, which is higher than the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which is rated at AA, and it's equal to the United States government, which is AA+. So other people have independently evaluated Hadley and seen that we're a very well-managed town with respect to our finances, and this results in a favorable bond rating, which, when we go to our overall result, we hope, in a favorable interest rate on our borrowing. So we're still working on the financials for the four articles that are in front of you. We are, last October, we came to you and we said, we knew that we had three buildings that we needed to provide for. We needed a new library, a senior center, and a new fire substation. At that time, we told you that we could do that at $95 per average single-family house, that the increase in taxes for all three buildings plus other borrowings that we did last year would result in a rate of $95, additionally, you would have to write in your checkbooks to the town. And the voters approved that. We have embarked on these projects, and we found that the original budget estimates for this project were too low, and so we have to come back to you and raise, ask for an additional $3.2 million. And so can we, can we offer this at $95? And the answer is yes. We're looking at our budget projection for that schedule, and we think that we can provide this at $95, increase on the taxes. Can everybody hear me? A little bit closer? Oh, yeah, that's much better.
David, could we slightly sharpen a little bit? I don't have any focus. It's not quite in focus.
David?
I'm sorry.
A little out of focus there?
I think that's as good as we can.
Sorry, it's going to be, that's as good as we get.
It's available online.
Okay, so let me, this is your existing debt above the limit. This is your existing debt above the limit limit. This is blue shade here. This has already been committed to and will be paying it off over a period of a couple of years. As you can see, there's an opportunity to fill this in in order to have a stable impact upon the tax rate. This part here, extending out a long ways, is the additional burden of tax, of tax impact for the borrowing that would be assumed if all four articles passed. So this differs from last year, when we showed you $95, but the $95 started falling off around here. With the additional money that we're coming to you, we're going to have to pay this off over a long period of time. That's option one. Option two is to defer one of these projects, and this has a major impact on the tax, on our debt burden, as well as our ability to plan for future capital projects that we know that are going to be coming up. At some point, we're going to need a DPW garage. We know that we need some improvements to Hopkins Academy. We have other buildings that are going to need some sort of treatment. So we want to make sure that we have capacity in the future to keep the impact of taxes as level as possible. That blue there is the obligation that we've already made. The orange would show the impact of $95, but it would reduce much faster. How's that?
Much better.
So we're, so if you could go back one slide. $95 for a very long time. All the projects moved forward at a conservative estimate of 5 percent interest, which is very conservative. Go back to the other slide, please. $95 with one of the projects deferred, and we were able to provide capacity for additional funding for known capital needs in the future. The finance committee and the select board are still working out which is the best approach, and they will be presenting that at the special town meeting next Tuesday, but that's kind of where we are at this point. Next slide. So now we're going to get into the articles. We're just going to walk through them one by one. If people have questions, we're obviously happy to take them. Mr. Devine, if you would come up.
Thanks very much. And as David said, thanks, everybody, for being involved in the process. As you've noticed, our good friend John Washkevich hasn't been at some of the meetings lately. John's mom is a little ill, and we wish her the best of health, and we would ask for your thoughts and prayers for her at this point in time. John would love to have been here tonight, but again, he's only taking care of his family. Article number one is to borrow an additional $1.8 million to add to the budget already appropriated to build the new senior center. Original dollar estimates at the last October paper were insufficient to cover all construction costs. The funding will be borrowed, subject to approval of debt exclusion ballot vote. Again, in October, we voted to approve $5.3 million for the construction of the new senior center. Unfortunately, the project cost exceeded the original budget amount. This article provides for the construction of a 12,000-square-foot building on one level. The new building would be built on the field behind Booker School, and the new building is designed to provide a wide range of activities and programs to promote the quality of life for the seniors in the town. Jane Nether Smith is here from our buildings committee, seniors buildings committee. Unfortunately, Suzanne Tradoson is unable to join us today. She's had some surgery recently as well. So if people had any questions regarding it, we'll see what we can do to best answer the questions that you have. Yes?
Gary Lurk, Tom Rowe. So, I don't know, does anybody remember when $1.8 million used to be a lot of money? Because I started looking into this and realized that within sight of that property, we have over three commercial buildings that have 10,000 square feet or more available, and that would give us 10 years' worth of lease, just $1.8 million out, existing infrastructure, minimize our environmental footprint, already connected to sewer, already DME compliant, ready in months as opposed to years. Help out a local business, take existing space that's already there and make it.
What parts of properties are you speaking of specifically?
There's three of them that the builder are using, right there. The new building was the one at the old registry building.
Technically, can you hear the conversation between both of us?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much for speaking.
So I think, now, for $1.8 million out, there's 10-year lease right there for existing building that's already there. We're all about decreasing our environmental footprint, taking out an existing ball field, and building a new building does not reduce our environmental footprint. We could outfit this building, have it ready at once as opposed to years, and meet all the needs of our seniors and women. I hear from my parents, they definitely want to have a new building of some sort, so they can have fun with it. And I'm getting the newsletter now, so I guess I'm holding up the joint. So I just understand.
Congratulations. You've arrived.
You get a birthday cake and fries. So I just don't understand why we didn't look at existing space in town that's already connected to sewer, already has infrastructure, already has parking, and is already compliant, where it would allow us to, now that we have a comparable space to what is proposed, what it would be a lot quicker, and help the local economy as well as reduce our footprint.
Okay. We'll take that under advisement, and I'm sure it's going to come up next Tuesday. I could tell you from the point of view, we talked about trying to have access off of Route 9, and the seniors were absolutely dead-set against about having anything on Route 9. They felt the transportation and the traffic, the way it flowed on Route 9 was inconducive to having a senior center anywhere near there. To the best of my ability, that's best I can answer your question. Any others? Anybody else from the committee have anything that they'd like to offer? No? Okay. Mr. Ed Golding.
Yes, I can hear you. Just wanted to tell you to go to the microphone.
There's a microphone there.
I don't have a good angle, so if you step, if you can hear me better. I just want to say, the gentleman's point is a very good one, and we have been frustrated by the general condition in Massachusetts with the requirements for municipal buildings. And these are set down in Boston, and a number of people will tell you, as you now, that if you're in the private sector and building a building, you can build a comparable building for much less money. This is our state, and this is why our alleged representatives in Boston have decided, is it the way municipal building ought to happen? Okay? That would be what I'd like to see that change, but right now, that's the condition that we have to deal with. The other thing is, I've been on the senior center building committee for over a year since it began, and we've met with architects, and it's been a critical education to me about how much is known in architecture and design, about the very special needs that seniors, particularly older and frail seniors, need. And they normally will not be well-accompanied by any ordinary space that doesn't have the planning from the beginning about access thresholds and things like that, and it can be quite expensive to modify things after the fact to do all the work.
Mr. Golding. To your point, the state doesn't own the post offices, and the state doesn't own the courthouses, so they know exactly what you're talking about.
So it just seems to make sense if we want a senior center up and running. We have existing spaces right there. We've got very competent contractors in town that we can hire to outfit that space and do it for a lot less money, and have it up quicker, and build spaces vacant.
Mr. Tudor.
Thank you. My name is David Tudor. I'm the chairperson of the municipal buildings committee. Our committee was assembled after an estimate was completed for all municipal buildings. In essentially any scenario that we looked at, it would cost more and would take longer to renovate our town structures for the senior center program. There's issues pertaining to code compliance, accessibility, mechanical systems, electrical systems, seismic reinforcement, historical preservation. So, you know, if you'd like to join us for the conversation of potentially repurposing our buildings, we meet regularly on this, and honestly, we've looked at every scenario that we can think of in terms of moving these programs around, and our committee still supports this article.
Okay.
Any other questions we can help you with? Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, I'll be speaking about the land and the purchase there for $405,000 in North Hadley across from the intersection of Stockbridge Street. It's approximately nine and a half acres. This was offered at town meeting a while back, a couple of years ago, when the building committee was looking for a campus-type area to put a lot of facilities there. It could have even been the library, the Consul on Aging Building, but most of those people wanted to be located in the center of town, so it was passed over at town meeting. And at that time, it was being offered for $550,000. Since then, it's gone on the market again, and now they're offering it for $400,000. The $5,000 comes into effect for legal fees, that's the additional $5,000. The other thing I guess I want to explain is how this all started. Initially, we were looking for area land in the northern section of town to help build a new fire substation. Since that time, things have changed rapidly. Initially, the fire department filled out applications for a SAFER grant, which we were denied, and so we're back to square one. We were told the reason for denying us was we're too rich of a community. And I can see where they're coming from. Places like Orange received the grant. 52 percent of their population is impoverished. We've got places like Ware, their downtown is listed as a blighted section now, so I can understand them, you know, the money going to other communities that truly need it. The other problem was, now that we lost the grant, we're sort of putting the cart before the horse, because all along, we wanted to upgrade Center Station and have enough personnel to maintain the fire department so they could protect our property and citizens in this town. But at the same time, we forged ahead with building the substation in North Hadley Center because the town owned that property. But after going through all the hoops and everything, a lot of things and mistakes were made, both committees, the Consul on Aging and the Fire Committee. You have to bear in mind, both of those committees were all volunteer people, no special people. We tried to pull the people out of town that did have the expertise, and we had zero budgets. So mistakes were made, like the library had X amount of dollars, they covered all their bases and did everything properly. The other two made mistakes along the way, and that's why all these articles are coming back looking for more money because of that. The North Hadley lot, it's become problematic because of what they found there and the upload of that property to get it so it would be prepared properly so the building wouldn't sink, would be an additional $400,000. So in a way, the committee looked the other place as $400,000 for nine and a half acres of land, so it's really a no-brainer on the price, and so that's where we're at today, having it before you people, and if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Tom, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. It was mentioned that the North Hampton lot, that's the people lot between the congregation and the other town building, which we thought was safe.
Correct, sir.
Are either of those two buildings sinking?
No. But the problem is where the ball field was, originally, it sloped all the way down to the pond, the great field of fields was built and brought in to build it up and make a playing field there. So this is where the problem is. All that would have to be dug out, and proper fill would be brought in to maintain the building, because if they put it in there now and you built the building, we were told by engineers it would sink six to eight inches after you built it. So that's the reason for uploading it properly. Any building that you build today, they upload them, so you eliminate that problem, but it's indicative of where you build it. This land in the northern section of town, we had the borrowings done there, and everything is perfect for building there. They went down a little over 30 feet, and they didn't hit water, and then it started to get a little water. Before they got water, it was over 40 feet. So it's an ideal site to build on the whole lot. Yes, Jane?
I think if you might just explain about environmental preservation, why this is why we're allowing this now?
Okay. What Jane asked, she wants to know about, I think, 61A. In 61A, farmers pay into that for a reduced amount on their tax payment every year. By entering into 61A, the town is allowed first right of refusal on any 61A property that gets sold. So that's the reason we're entertaining it right now, because we're the first. They do have a buy-and-sell agreement with another individual for the $400,000, but we have first right of refusal to purchase the property.
Mr. Trussey, is there a timeline on that first right of refusal?
Yes. I believe it's September 19th?
September 15th.
September 15th. That's why we're in a rush to include it, yeah. So that's the reason why August 29th was chosen for the special meeting to accomplish that, if the residents choose to do so.
Well, Donald spoke a great deal on the subfire station, so there's not too much left to talk about, except that Article 3 borrows $810,000, which we do add to the budget already appropriated to build a new subfire station. The original dollar estimates approved last October were insufficient to cover all construction costs. Funding will be borrowed, subject to approval of debt exclusion ballot vote. In October of last year, the voters approved a $2.9 million construction of a new subfire station in North Hadley. As the project was about to progress, geotechnical surveys revealed that the supporting soils were unable and needed major excavation and treatment. In addition, the project estimates were too low to complete the construction to the requirements of the town. of the town. The additional money needed to be raised is appropriated in this article. In purchasing the property in North Hadley, that comes first, whether or not the subfire station could be put onto that property, that's why the test forums were done there to begin with. We may not, now we don't have to have money to do backfill like we were going to need to do to the North Hadley center station, you know, not the center station, but the one by, in the ball field. So that's where it may be a little less that we're doing, I know the number is going to stay, 810. Our fire chief is working with Phil Plomo to see if the reduced cost because of not needing the backfill, so we still may have another number by next week. Correct, Mike? Okay. So that's where we are right now. Any questions? There's been a lot of speculation of Donald saying that, you know, we were concentrating on doing the center station and, you know, our, as a select board, our priorities this year were to fire and safety and police. So that's where we've been concentrating on to increase our staffing and do that, but we want to make sure every area of town is covered.
Okay, and last but not least, Article Four. Article Four is the article related to the library. The town received a construction grant from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners to cover 50% of eligible construction costs for a new library on the site of the current senior center. This article borrows $3.3,786,292 as the town's share of the total costs. Funding will be by borrowing, subject to approval of a debt exclusion ballot vote. Just a little bit of background, so the new library will be on the footprint of the Hooker School. The senior center will be built in the lot behind the Hooker School, that's the plan. The new library replaces the 115-year-old current library, which was built for approximately 1,000 residents. How this population is now closer to 6,000. The current library is not handicap accessible. The new library will be accessible to all town residents. The new library will have a community room that will be available for use by community groups after library hours. And again, the construction grant award is for 3.9 million, which is actually winds up being more than half the cost of the new library, with the town picking up about 46% of that cost. Library Campaign Committee has a goal of raising $300,000 towards that cost and they have already committed, I believe, close to $85,000. So, again, with the library, I think that one other thing, I know that's been a question that's come up fairly frequently, is why couldn't we put the library and senior center together, which was a very logical question. So again, just in the spirit of sharing information, the library grant was only available for a standalone library, there were very specific criteria that needed to be met. I think it was possible, you know, the committee actually pushed the envelope fairly heavily on that one to see if there was any opportunity, but the board that offers the grant money made it very clear that it would not likely be anywhere near the top of the list if we went down that path, so just wanted to clear that up, because I know it's probably one of the most common questions that is asked of me. So any questions regarding the library? We have several folks in the library, trustees and interested parties here, if you do. Tom?
I have a question in regards to the requirement of library, as far as building from the street when you get the grant. The town will have 46% of the money. I looked at what was proposed in the library as a community library, and I looked at the senior center, it also has a library, and even though it's over on the years, there are quite a few libraries that serve, from Hopkins Academy, you have the elementary school, you have the, when you speak about police, you have the planning about Chinese will have thousands of students, they have a library. So the youth are served by libraries and where they're at school. The Hopkins Library here is open from 7:15 in the morning to 3 o'clock, five days a week. So I was just concerned, because when I'm looking at it, that the construction, or the concept of the library, is that this is a community and has a kitchen and has other things, and the concept of what a library is. So I don't know how it's serving the youth of the community if the community are well taken care of at the present time by multiple libraries that exist in these schools during this education period.
Okay. I'm happy to speak to that, and then certainly if there's anybody else that wants to fill in any gaps, library director in particular, feel free. As a former school committee member, I can actually tell you that the, there's actually a lot of concern about the service provided to students by the libraries existing in the schools, meaning the elementary school library was actually shut down several years ago and wasn't staffed, and I can't remember exactly when, but it's in the kind of late 2000s. The schools actually worked hand in hand with the prior library director to see if they could ramp up some of the programming and make sure that the students had access to a true librarian who was there not only to help the kids figure out, you know, how do I, how do I find this book or order this book on the system or use computers, but also how to do some level of research. So, you know, I think, you know, again, the schools are doing a marvelous job, but they've needed to prioritize where their dollars have gone and it's gone into classroom instruction primarily. And the other issue that you have with the schools, Hopkins Academy, is that it's really not accessible off school hours. So even if you have access to material at the library, again, the students, you know, 3 o'clock pretty much, the school is being shut down, so I don't know who in the audience has children, when they do, when you think they do their homework, but oftentimes it's not during the day, they actually need those resources far more in the early evening hours and weekends for project work in the light. So I appreciate where you're coming from, but I, you know, I think the argument would certainly be that it's not intended to supplant anything that's happening in the schools, it's already been provided, but it's a very clear enhancement that the schools are fully supportive of, and I believe the school committee is on record saying that they're fully supportive, support of the expanded library in that regard. And again, to your point, it is a community library, so one of the other things that happens with kids is that when the school building is shut, not everybody has somewhere necessarily to go. So the new library will provide teen space, which I think everybody feels is very lacking right now in the community, the teenagers, that there's no like Boys and Girls Club in Hadley or anything like that. So the hope is that the library then will help enhance and provide resources for that age group which is underserved. Patrick, do you want to?
I'm the library director, Patrick Roseau, and I would just say that, you know, the services that we provide benefit all members of the community. As Molly mentioned, you know, when school is over, we provide space for kids, teenagers, older adults to come in and read, access computers, borrow materials. If you rely on the school libraries to do that, they're, they're not, can't, adults cannot be served by a school library. We're already not able to serve these many adult members of our community because of accessibility issues. There are many reasons to address this, it's not just an issue of serving the community, which is a priority for us, it's also about universal accessibility needs of all members of the community.
Do you have a quick follow-up that people have questions to?
What, what, what are the messages?
Okay, circle back. Okay, in the back there?
Yeah. Just a quick question, does this include the demolition costs for the Hooker School?
I'm sorry, somebody sneezed right when you were asking that. What was the question?
Does this include the demolition costs for the Hooker School?
Yes, and I'm very glad that you asked that question, because I realized I missed that in the talking points. That's something to, again, bear in mind. No idea how these votes are going to go, but the cost of the library construction project does include the tearing down and demolition of the Hooker School and preparation of that site. If that article were to fail, those monies are not included elsewhere, so just be aware of that. Thank you. Other questions on this article? Tom, do you have one follow-up?
Yes. The Hopkins Academy website shows that every citizen in Massachusetts that can be a member of the Boston Public Library, and it goes into each household in the community.
Yeah.
Which gives them the access to a multiple of reference resources that can be done at home in the future. And I look at the destruction of a star building in town as a very grave decision, because we now have people taking down, and we can prove it, two of the four star buildings in town. And the reason that the Hooker School has to come down is because the Board of Library Commissioners requires that the building be visible from the street and in buildings and people aren't maybe too lazy to turn their head on at 9 to 11:00, so I think that we, we need to look at the role of the library in a community, and community library, other rooms, the kitchen, the, and the expansion, in light of the fact that we have other places. And I found it very interesting, in looking to find out what a community library is, is to find out what has been written up as libraries that we all knew from the definition of a library that's changed. So I would ask that people take a look at the Rosalind Dunn's article in the Atlanta Germ Constitution 18 of 8 seconds, 2012, and there you will find out what activities now take place in libraries.
Okay.
And it's not about letters, not about information, not about learning.
Right, it's about expanded services, and I think, you know, again, I want to be careful tonight, we're trying hard to dance that line of not advocating for or against, but to your point, Tom, I'm sure that the folks representing the library article on Tuesday are going to be speaking exactly to that and talk to folks about the role of the library in a community, and there will be opportunity for any white power point on that on town meeting floor.
And a study that was done on the Wibbham Memorial Library to renovate that building, which would increase its size by addition of elevator and staircases, would have made that building totally accessible, ADA accessible, at a cost of like $1.3 million rather than this amount where the citizens would pay, was this all taxpayer money?
Yeah, again, not, not here to advocate for or against, but similar to the conversation about the senior center, as Jerry mentioned, the totality of the picture was taken into account, which included parking, expanded programming, relative to the cost of, you know, having a brand new building versus modifying an existing one, I'm still having several concerns, but I'll let the, let that occur on Tuesday night. Is there a question in the back?
Yeah. How much larger would the new building be in comparison to the current library, and would there be expanded hours that it would be open as well?
Patrick?
So the, the current building is, is about 5,000 square feet, but it's on three levels, one of the levels is not usable, it's going to lose a lot of space by degree of the town inspector. So we have about 3,500 square feet of usable space as it is. The new building will be 11,800 square feet. We have no plan to change the hours after the new building is built. We make those decisions based on service needs and the needs of the community. There are no plans to expand the staff as a result of the expansion of the building we built in this design, managed by the staff that we have now.
Okay. Any questions about Article Four? Yes.
Could someone from the library trustees or someone, when the gentleman asks a question about demolition, it sounds like a wrecking ball is going to come in and just destroy everything and it's gone forever. Could they explain how they're going to try to implement a facade of Hooker School to be part of the building? I'm not saying it's going to be possible, but they're working in that effort and they could explain what they're doing.
In concert with the historical commissions that speak to that?
Sure. Right now, what we have set is an interior plan, so, so, by standards, by Wisconsin standards, we set the sizes of each room in the library. These are standardized across the country by population. We went from a more conservative library, so you know, there's three levels, we went from more conservative. The inside of the library is set. The exterior of the library still has to go through all the different phases in town. We have to work with the Starville Commission, we have to make sure it's acceptable to the town. It's really the inside floor plan that has been set, and building costs have been estimated, assuming, say, it's a brick building and all those kinds of things, but the actual design of the exterior will go through all the town processes.
Okay. All right, so I think that unless there are any further questions about any of these articles, encourage everybody to come out next Tuesday, 7 o'clock, right here, Hopkins Academy, for the August special town meeting, and don't be lulled into any sense of complacency that there will not be robust discussion at the town meeting floor. Okay, so thank you everybody for attending tonight, and we will be continuing with our regular business of our regularly scheduled select working. So you're more than welcome to stay and enjoy or go home, and Jerry has something else to say?
The library has a floor plan which can be accessed, so people who have questions regarding the floor plan, can they go online and see the floor plan somewhere, where would they see that?
Yep, we have a website, it is, you go to the regular library, go to the, so we'll take to the new.
Thank you very much.
It's in a free shop.
So can they, it's linked from the Wibbham Memorial Library website. Okay? Yes?
Is that in August 29th? Well, I understand this correctly, it has to be two-thirds majority, is this the best?
Yes, for, for the borrowing articles, they require a two-thirds majority, and if they pass, then they will then go to ballot. And right now, we have scheduled the actual ballot in anticipation of something passing for November 14th. Okay? And just so you know, too, I mean, again, many people weren't pleased to find out that we were having two special town meetings, not the least of which were the folks up here, but there was a constraint because of the sale of that land, so we did have to fit one in, we weren't going to be able to make it to the October meeting. However, we have been able to condense it down, so if there are any borrowing articles that occur at the October 5th, normal fall town meeting, those will all be on one ballot, so we will only be having that one ballot vote on November 14th.
So what you're saying, we're going to vote twice, we're going to vote on the 29th, and then we're going to pay a paper ballot on the ballot?
Exactly. So however it goes on town meeting floor, you need two-thirds in order to make it to the ballot, but then anything can happen at the ballot. Linda?
Except for the land.
Exactly. So right now, the discussion that we've had about the $400,000 purchase, we actually are not intending to borrow that money, because we have room within the current levy limit. So if in fact that article passes, then that $400,000 is not going to appear in a borrowing. We'll be able to go ahead and deal with that within our current financial structure. So, but it would be the senior center, the substation and the library would all require a ballot vote. I got that right? We'll borrow and we just get paid with the budget this. Okay. All right, well, thank you, that concludes the forum, and again, hope to see everyone and many more next Tuesday here at 7:00. Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to have more information on the sewer impact, the agreement with the chapter.
Second.
Okay, second for discussion regarding the chapter. Second for discussion regarding the Tappo.
Okay. So the building is owned by landlord. The landlord has been then received of the sewer impact fee based upon his going in there to the tavern, basically. They received that information back in June. They did not transfer that information over to the tenant, the Tappo, until August. And so the fee is $15,000 in change. And the tenant has come to us just a few weeks before they're going to open and say they did not expect to receive them and reviewed the lease for the, between the tenant and landlord. It looks like the tenant is, in fact, responsible for the sewer impact fee. And so the tenant has asked for payment scheduled in case of receiving this information at the last minute. And this is, this is going to be ultimately a dispute between tenant and landlord that has to be worked out without involvement from the town as having. But we have entered, we have entered into agreements before. There would be a payment on September 1st, a payment on January 1st, and then the last payment would be October 2018. So in about a year's time, the whole thing would be paid off.
I'm of the opinion that our agreement should be with the owner of the property and not with the tenant. If the tenant, for some reason, was to not pay it or decide to leave the Commonwealth Massachusetts, we'd be left on the hook. If the landlord has a piece of property, we could always lean the property to receive our payment. I just think it's poor business to get into the middle of a conflict of having the tenant be the one on the hook responsible. I understand, and they may have some issues that they need to work back and forth, but I want to make sure that the repayment that we received comes from the owner of the property, not from the tenant.
I agree with you 100% Jerry. The only other thing I have for a question on the same thing is what would transpire? What's to pay that impact fee? What if at a later date, they decide to put a restaurant in? The impact fee would be much greater if it was a restaurant, not just a Tappo. So what happens then? Once they pay the impact fee, do we have a recourse to come back later if it is a restaurant?
Mr. Marlowe's in the yard if you'd like to speak.
Yeah. The quick answer is a change of use would trigger additional or lesser impact fees depending upon what we're talking about here. But the impact fee is paid initially, right? But we can always bring it up at a later date if there's a change? The impact fee again?
If there's a change of use.
Okay. That's fine. Then I'll...
So it sounds like there's a sentiment to have the agreement with the landlord, which makes sense to me also, to be the property owner itself, because that's effectively the collateral anywhere. Do you not have...
To help clarify, originally, the building was, the permit, the store permit was called to be office space. And in that agreement with the permit, if the use of the building was going to change, then there are additional impact fees. That's kind of what's happening here with the strategy. But as part of it, if it changes a year from now and it changes the use of it, then it affects how we arrive at our impact fees, then it would be adjusted again to whatever the new use is. So the time it keeps going, go on, let's stay the same and doesn't change. This impact fee credit was given from the original retail space, credit given to the new impact fee under the Tappo. So there was a credit given for your initial impact fee.
Yeah, that does clarify that. And the other thing is, I know he said he's not going to have a restaurant in there, but he's going to allow people to order and bring food in and eat it on premises? Isn't he still going to have to be required to have order health licenses for that? Because they're eating on the premises?
Nothing to do with the sewer impact fee.
No, I realize that, but this is part of the whole thing. And I just wanted to bring it up for further clarification.
If the food is prepared in a board of health inspected kitchen, then it can be transported to another location.
It's like, yeah, we could go to your house.
You know, just as an aside, I waived the full restraits for the outside, but I made it also, we were given the final permit that if they ever go in a kitchen, we're going to think you're required to go for full restriets. So...
Okay. So can we remove that then and have you work with?
I can remove it with...
I'm willing to approve it tonight with the change, so that you don't have to bring it back, as long as it goes.
Oh, because he's opening. Yeah, he's trying to.
Yeah. I don't want to necessarily defer this guy's opening day, so as long as we're working in good faith to resolve this, I'll bring it back if there's a problem. Okay. And I just wanted to ask you to take a look at the September, October meeting schedule. Molly, you're not going to be here for most of September.
Oh, so yeah. Joyce will have the time.
Then I cancel all the meetings. That's easy.
Yes, I won't be here for the 6th. The 13th I may arrive, but very late. Okay, everybody good with the schedule?
I don't like, I don't...
It's every single Wednesday, I mean.
I don't know why I'm doing a public forum for 219, 2019 budget. I don't think it's going to be with them, but that's my own personal agenda.
Yeah, why don't we defer that conversation when we talk, when we get a little bit closer and talk about that?
Okay.
If people could put it on as a placeholder for now, but then, yeah, let's talk about it.
All right.
All right. So there's a motion made in second with the one modification.
And a letter to Laura, thank her for her time on the shaking committee and conservation commission.
Jennifer, sign it please. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public comment? Is anyone here for public comment this evening? No? Okay.
I would like to utilize a little bit of that for a change.
Not in here.
I think it's very important. I really do.
No.
Go ahead.
No. You know, we talked about four articles earlier. Originally, it was $11 million, and it has escalated to $15 million. We haven't balanced the 218 budget, and who knows what's going to happen with 219 at this point. But it's time to start looking at revenues. And I just want to make some suggestions of where maybe us, along with the finance committee, can begin to look. Cutting off the reservoir, which we did in the last time, was in 1982. It brought in $45,000. We started our stabilization fund with that, and it's up to $2.2 million. So that's a place to look. A solar array on our landfill area, which could bring in new revenues. LED changeover on our streetlights, which could save us a lot of money. Ruffs of school property, what are we going to do with that? I consider that a million dollar corner. You know, if we change it, keep the historical aspect and build something, consider changing KP Law with another law firm, maybe Koppelman Page, who we had for years, could save us a lot of money.
That's who we are.
No, and, no, I'm checking, KP Law and Koppelman Law Service is the original one. KP Law is, Lynn Koppelman has his own firm now, and he would be much cheaper than KP Law, and he'd provide the same services. What we're going to do with North Abbey Hall, reservoir property, maybe we could sell it to save revenue. And then what transpires with the Heineken lot? If the people choose to buy it, maybe we could spin off a couple building lots on each side. We really don't need nine and a half acres. We could cut the price in half. So that's just fine right there. And that's all I wanted to bring forth. So maybe the finance committee will begin to look into these areas coming forth with the 219 budget.
Okay. And I just wrote them all down, too, so we'll make sure that they get their time. Okay. All right. So we have an appointment this evening with the Park Rec Commission. So we've got two items for this evening. One is the recommendations for the hiring of the Park and Rec Director, and also the status of the construction of the project will be discussed.
Hi, folks.
Talk about the park first, Mr. Bush.
The park, yes.
I'm sorry.
Do the park first. The park.
The status of the Turka Park.
Okay. Well, they are coming up, but now, is this something you put on the agenda?
It's here.
Right. I don't know if it was...
You brought it forward.
It's a part of our submission.
Okay. Well, the reason it's on here is since the future administration of the project has to be decided, so I think that's still an open question.
Yes. So Jerry, you came to me earlier today and asked why this was on, and it took me a little while to remember the reason why we put it on. We have a request for the base screen, which is the final completion of the Turka Park makeover, coming up for potential funding at the October town meeting. And there's really a question as to who's supervising this project? Who's paying the bills? Who's creating change orders? Who's signing the contract? This project is moved forward under the Sewer Board, Park and Rec Commission, Friends of Turka Park, and we really need to clarify who's really in charge. My law should be Park and Rec Commission, but I understand there's reasons why you may not want to be involved. So we need to get this worked out before we really move forward on this project.
So does that need to be a standalone item? Or are you hoping to have that? I mean, should we also have the Friends of Turka Park in here when we're talking about it?
Yeah, we can talk, we can talk to somebody like that in the same room. We have time.
And I think CTA should put in as well.
All right. So let's pass over this.
Okay. Okay. All right. Then we'll go directly to the Park and Rec Commissioners. So this is a continuation of staffing. So just bring everybody up to speed. The Park and Rec Coordinator resigned her position back in May. She departed in June. I don't remember exactly what day. Park and Rec came forward looking to hire, and there was some discussion about whether or not that needed to be, continue to be a 30-hour work week position, or if it could be something reduced. Based on the back and forth, a decision was made to put something in on a temporary basis. So Park and Rec went ahead and attempted hire, but the select board approved. And then the select board asked that the Park and Rec, well, basically, the way the temp structure of any appointment of a permanent position needs to come in front of the select board. So I think since we last were together, some interviews were conducted, or recommendations being made by Park and Rec. But I also know that there have been some concerns expressed about the process, and we just need to make sure that, you know, appropriate hiring practices are being followed and all of that good stuff. So...
Yeah. So when we talked about the posting of the position, I asked that I be invited to the interviews, which, you know, we all get busy. It's drop called and happened. So I went back and asked for additional information about the candidates and the process by which they were selected. As an administrative issue, our temporary program director, her term was going to expire on the 21st of August. I administratively extended her term for an efficient six weeks as a temporary hire until September 27th, which gives us ample time to resolve this issue, because she was going to go through a number of contortions in order to make sure she was doing her work within the timeframe. And it just seemed so much simpler if we administratively just extended her time. I consulted with the Flares Association of New England prior to taking that step, so that was a corporate thing to do. So I just took care of it at that point. Informed her by telephone, because I know she's on vacation, because she had been receiving a letter from me in her home address extending her term until September 27th. I did ask for documentation on the process. I didn't receive everything that I was looking for. I did receive the three candidates' resumes. There were only three received. And so I know that the Park and Rec Commission has a preferred candidate from the three. And I know that we've preferred salary range for that person. And I was just wondering if you could amplify as to why this particular candidate and how did we arrive at the salary, which I believe is $22.20 per hour, which you put her right about the overall range.
Yeah, that'd be great. Just have to... On behalf of to elaborate a little bit, I'm sorry there was the miscommunication regarding your participation. It was, I will say that after our meeting where we had the approval to proceed with the interviews, I did call your office, left you a message, not hearing back. I sent an email. I did find out you were out of the office, spoke to you via mobile phone, which we discussed whether or not the select board was in favor of the process of the Park and Rec Commission commencing their own interviews and making the recommendation. Through our conversation, I did get, you said that we were good to go with that plan. And in fact, later that day, I did receive an email from your office saying exactly that the select board is on board with you, Park and Rec. Select your candidates and schedule your own interviews. Order, vote all applications as they come in. So we were under the impression at that point that we were to schedule our own interviews. Again, I apologize that we weren't part of that. We were under the, based on our conversation and email, we thought we were going to proceed with that. Well, on behalf of to elaborate on the process, if you have some concerns about that, what we did do is we wound up interviewing all three applicants, all three, everybody who submitted a resume got interviewed. We established a sheet of standardized questions. And at the time, there were two commissioners that interviewed these folks. We allocated one hour each for the interviews. They were conducted over a couple of nights. We then proceeded and had an interview where we asked our candidate questions. These were open-ended questions, which allowed for us to either elaborate on them or have a candidate elaborate on them. And after which, we turned the interview over to them, allowed them to ask questions of us. We took notes. We then, at our next commission meeting, at the end of regular business, we turned to executive session, which we prepared notes of the different candidates, and we made a selection based on the background and presentation of that candidate.
So you had specific hiring criteria?
I'm sorry.
You had specific hiring criteria documented in advance that you were checking them against?
Yes.
Okay.
We had some that were more sports oriented and not enough, you know, necessarily non-sport activities. It's some that had experience in the various areas, but we have three candidates, and we believe to be the best choice.
This is not about candidate themselves. I'm sure that they have a great candidate, but I do have to say that the finance committee is not at all supportive of hiring someone at this time. We really, really felt that we should push this up until after November 14th, after the ballot has gone through, to see if this is crunch time, if we are going to have to come up with a plan B for the budget. We felt that only if it was a, we talked about it several times, only if it was essential staff, that it would absolutely had to. But we really need to have someone in at this time, that you can't keep that temporary person temporary and still after the ballot, when you know what the override is going to go for next.
What's the date of your recommendation?
The date after the recommendation is if the override...
After the 15th of November.
After November 15th. Yeah. After the ballot has gone through.
Well, it's, I will say that, you know, as we know that this position is already funded with the current budget. And that was approved in the spring, at the annual town meeting. We also have ongoing programs, of which right now we have, like Thorazine is our soccer program. We have over 80 families that have signed up. We have over $20,000 receipts. We have ongoing after-school programs that are rolling. And we have a candidate who isn't necessarily going to stick around for an interim position, not knowing where they're going to be, whether or not they're, you know, what it's going to be in November, but it may or may not be an easier time for them to find alternate employment. So... So, and it would be challenging to say the least to have a temporary candidate continue to manage these programs. We've had feedback from families in town saying that, you know, it's comforting for them to be able to know that they're sending their kids into a program, they're sending to somebody they know and they trust, a familiar face in town. It's also, from an administrative standpoint, somebody needs to know all of the ins and outs of working within the school and the like. So we understand that they're in a certain day crunch time. We know that sixty thousand dollars in the Park and Rec budget is something, like you said, was approved at last year's spring town meeting, and we feel that we're in a position that we need to proceed with the hire, to continue to offer these services and programs to the citizens of Hadley.
Can I just ask what the previous coordinator received hourly rate?
That's public information, no?
It is public information, she was receiving at the top of the grade.
Twenty-seven, twenty-nine. Can you talk about your rationale behind the pay scale? Because looking at the resumes and the recommended hire has absolutely no background in Park and Recreation Program, so why would you bring somebody in at a step of four? And the other thing is, the town has a policy which was brought about by some significant personnel issues, why they wrote the policy, and the town has made a commitment that only under extenuating circumstances, where you're bringing somebody on board with clear justification for them moving into a pay scale, and then that clear justification being extensive experience typically, or licensing, or higher education, something that would set them apart and make us believe that we were bringing somebody on board who was going to really enhance the skill sets for a particular spot.
Of grade one versus grade four?
No, grade, step, step one.
Steps, step one versus step four? That's the, they brought up the question.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't seem to me to be, if the candidate had, if you were bringing somebody forward who had built out a Park and Rec program in other municipalities and had some sort of revenue generating track record and just an amazing resume, honestly, just looking at, looking at the resumes and the skill sets, there's absolutely no background whatsoever in this type of work, and it doesn't mean the person won't be successful. People do career-changing all the time, there are definitely other skill sets that clearly you evaluate in that process, but I'm really having difficulty mapping that to coming in at a step four, and I don't even know how to communicate that to the other personnel in town.
Well, the rationale, first of all, we were, had certainly been looking for some guidance as to where the particular entry points need to be. The rationale behind the experience was that this particular candidate has run a number of programs in coordination of the school, and that are very similar to Park and Rec programs. And also felt that in addition to necessarily just Park and Rec coordinator-type background that this person brings, other expertise to the job that we were lacking perhaps in the past, that we feel we could leverage.
Such as?
Such as IT experience. That's something, you know, we want to improve our online presence and our online aspects of managing registration, cash receipts, these are all things that have been goals and objectives for a while for the commission, and we're looking forward to advancing them. We feel this particular candidate just feels that that would allow us to do that.
Do you have thoughts about even?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, you know, he said he has the funding in the two-eighteen budget. When we come to October, I think everybody's budget is going to be on the line. If the Finance Committee recommends, you know, to make cuts somewhere, to get a balanced budget, the town's people are probably going to go along with it, and at this point, we don't even have those figures yet, we're working on them. The board is even considering, at their suggestion, a firing. I'm not firing a hiring freeze in this town because of our lack of revenues. So, you know, these areas are going to be answered, and I agree with Molly, starting on step four is out of the ordinary, it should be step one, it's a new employee coming in, they know what the pay was, and that's what it should be. We've done it with everyone else, we've hired like in the highway and everywhere else recently, and again, I think their criteria of trying to explain it to other employees puts us in an adverse position, you know, and I agree with you.
I was under the understanding that there's a, two positions that we have allocated money for for this budget period. Now, you are advocating we fill in only one of those positions and not the two positions?
At this time, yes.
At this time, in your alone, for the possibility of additional hiring?
Well, it's, it's in the budget, but as we know, last year we didn't spend any, we're near what we were budgeting.
So, so again, just, put on, put on a human resource organization hat, okay? The last thing we want to be doing is creating a situation where you have X amount of dollars allocated to a particular line item, where they're clearly for X number of full-time equipment, or, you know, you have two and a half people, whatever, and one individual winds up being compensated because the money's there. That's, that's not how compensation systems work, so the compensation for that position needs to stand on its own regardless of whether or not there are other ones available. They're two completely separate issues. Is that clear?
Yes.
And I, you know, I, I'm not choosing who you, I'm not choosing who your choice is. Your choice is who you want. We have had in the past, and we've had some ramifications of people stepping into roles of, at the same pay that you didn't do, of a person that's left and then come back, come in and take the same pay as whatever, without the experience. I'm not in favor of that. Being a union person as I was, I'm afraid I'm at the bottom of the scale on this one, because that's where I came from, that's what I'm used to. And again, it would be hard to justify throughout the town different things, and I, you know, I have to go along with that since we're in a little bit of a budget crunch at this point. And I'm not questioning your pick or your choice, it's up to you who you choose, but, I'm afraid at this time, I would like to see that a different start, step one.
It's understandable, it would have been nice to have had this through part of our other back, you know, direct communications weeks ago, rather than have this discussion here.
I think I did, I think I did say at one of the meetings about some other ramifications that we had.
Yes, you implied that there were, there were problems in the past.
Yeah, and, and...
I think I've been upfront about that, you think, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm saying...
And I have been supportive of who you choose.
What are the mechanisms to get to that, but at the same time, we're also hearing that, you know, you don't want to proceed with the hiring in general, at least the Finance Committee doesn't support that.
It would be, I know, I'm speaking for myself, except that everybody can say that it would be my preference that we put a hold on this until, till after that November meeting.
I don't mind the hiring, because there's already a position in place there, so that you're not adding a position, you're not expanding a position, you're filling a position that was there. My only, my only thing is, I'd rather see that person start off at step one and go from there. Because the money is there, and I, and I know the money is there for the higher amount, but again, we're trying to save some money someplace.
Do you always introduce employees at step one?
Yeah.
We have, we have made mistakes in the past, and we acknowledge and recognize that that's what they were, and we're trying to rectify that, not perpetuate or existing, or pre-existing issue, okay? So I'm sure anecdotally, you can go through and you'll find situations where that did not occur, but we collectively have made a commitment to march forward, again, paying much greater attention to appropriate human resource management and compensation, and that's part of the reason that dated contract with the Employers Association of New England to, in the absence of an HR manager, to get that type of guidance. And this was raised at the last meeting, Diane was present, we had a little bit of back and forth, if you recall, about the human resource aspects of this, so I appreciate where you're coming from, that, you know, you weren't given perhaps direct guidance, but I'm not sure what questions to ask in the middle there, even, Marion?
So, basically, you're kind of in favor of the position, just a scale is what I'm understanding from your ask.
I'm actually not, I mean, my, my preference would be others. If, if I were in your shoes, I was a fan of opportunity, and even just set the budget aside for now, I'd be far more inclined to bring somebody on on a part-time basis and see if we can reduce the number of hours required for this position, and then you can expand down the road. That, that's what I would be doing and looking at how to redirect those dollars into programming. I'm not on the Park and Rec Commission, so, but that's my mindset, I think this is an opportunity to rethink, rather than just take the thirty hours that we had before and drop someone else into it, especially recognizing when we look at the books, that that revolving account, this isn't a revenue generator, this is a cost to the town, and the town is effectively subsidizing this programming. You've got revenue coming in, but that revenue is turning around and paying other, other resources that you have to contract for to provide that programming. And the last time I looked at that was actually in a slightly negative position. So, I, I just think it's a time to really take a step back, deep breath, and revamp the program, which is why, for slightly different reason, I'm in favor of the Finance Committee's approach, which is to put a hold on it until after we know where we're at with these votes coming up, and then look at it again, and if everybody's in agreement, then yes, it's a thirty out of the position, then I'd be all in at the twenty dollars and two cents, not step four.
I'm of the opinion that your elected officials, when we look for you to run your department, that's how I feel about it. We came to town meeting, we asked town meeting for a budget, the budget was approved, and we went forward with that. I, I, I share the concerns with the entire board as to not, the financing not being quite appropriate, because it puts us and everybody else in such a predicament. It would be my opinion that we should go forward with the hire, and we should send you back to, or we would ask you to please include the administrator in a discussion and see if that would still be acceptable to the candidate that you extended the opportunity to. But I'm, I, I'm a hundred percent in favor of Park and Rec, I love what you guys do. We asked Mrs. LUCY to come in here, to come in here and present a program, what new things she could bring to the table on behalf of the Park and Rec. I loved some of the ideas that she had, and I look really forward to hoping that program grows, and I think there was some financial advantage to allowing the reins to be taken off and to, to understand that you guys have had some constraints on your department in the last year, that have made it very difficult for the program to grow and as we would like it to. So, I, financially, I understand what everybody else is saying, I think what you guys do in that department is too valuable to the town of Hadley to let it go by the wayside and to let it fester and, and kind of flounder around for a little bit, because I think it's going to be very hard to bring back, and that's my humble opinion. Even if we had to go to the taxpayers to ask for a little more money for, to understand what the budget needs to be with that, that's why I commend on that, on that side of it.
As an interim director, what is your salary rate now? I don't know what it is.
She, she was hired at twenty-five dollars an hour.
Twenty-five, right? Right now? And that doesn't include any benefits, correct?
Right, so this would be a thirty-hour benefited position?
Yeah, the benefits are going to add a lot of money to this position.
About thirty percent, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yes, Molly, I certainly understand your concerns about the direction of some of those programs you're going, we feel that with the current candidate, that a lot of that energy will turn around, that we'd be able to do more with less as the presentation was, was provided. And I think, I also agree that the programs that are provided to the town are a very valuable service to the town, and I think that in this day and age, when kids are getting less active and more isolated, it's, it's important to give them an experience where they're able to get outside and also tries to get together and socialize in an area beyond the street. And I think that for the amount of money that is invested in this particular program, town benefits from that, and it's more than use of works, it's adult activities, it's kids' activities, lots we save, all these types of programs that bring the community together, and I think, again, for the sixty thousand dollars, I think that when you're considering all these other projects that you have in place, and you're talking about a hiring oratorium, at the same time you're looking at new firemen, IT, HR, I'm sure down the road, there'll be expansions to staffs to the senior centers or library if those projects go through. I think that, I think that it's a short-term view to cut them off, I think it would be wise to continue to invest in Park and Rec. And revisit the, the step in grade.
Again, I want to be clear, I'm not, I'm not advocating for the elimination of Park and Rec, I'm talking about a change in the delivery mechanism of Park and Rec. Amy?
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear where I was coming from. I'm very much in favor of Park and Rec, I used to Park and Rec, I liked Park and Rec a lot, but I would, and just to be clear where I ended voting on a lot of these things, I voted no for the seniors, I voted no on the library, I voted, I constantly say to the seniors, what makes it hard, you know, why should we need you and not the kids? So I'm very much for Park and Rec, but at the same time, I really think that there is a likelihood that this override is not going to go through. Because this override is not going to go, if it does, if it does not go through this override, it's very important that we hire the firemen, because now it is unsafe for this town not to have the firemen. We, we need two men and a truck, and if we're not getting the firemen to come because of the, during the day, because the volunteers are not available, it's very unsafe for this town, so we feel that we have to hire the firemen. I'm not saying IT, IT is important, HR is important, but these firemen are very important. And I think that if you go ahead and you push this through now, and then crunch time comes after that, we do not, we do not get the override, then we're going to have to look, and now you might have to lay off people. I'd rather not lay off, I'd rather, you know, have to redo hours, maybe no benefits, maybe something else, and keep Park and Rec. We're going to have to do some crunch, maybe to other non-essential services. But why make it worse for ourselves? Why can't we, I would just say, push it off, just it's right there, it's right around the corner. If everything is, comes out and we get that override, then it's perfect, then we will be okay, but you have to plan for the worst.
So, if we're, if we're, just to be clear, what, in your board, another, the non-essential services?
Council on Aging, maybe the library, I mean, we have, even at the other departments, might even have to tighten their belt, they have to look at it, but you need to have safety there, number one, to make sure everybody's safe. You have to have so, you, by law, you have so much stuff with the schools, but that, you know, who knows what we're going to have to do with that, too? As you go down, you're going to end up, what's, what's towards the end? You have maybe Park and Rec, maybe Council on Aging, maybe the library, maybe some of these other things, and it's going to be a tough call.
No doubt it is, and I appreciate the effort, and you put in your challenge. I think, though, I was kind of surprised the last fall's town meeting, when we had all these large projects going through, two to ten million dollars, so, as described for that, it was ninety-five dollars on the tax bill, so I'm curious as to what the impact of a couple of firemen would be relative to ten million dollars to ninety-five?
Two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
Two, sorry?
Two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And the impact on the average tax bill?
Was it one sixteen for the increase? I think they did, I think a hundred and sixteen dollars for the override.
We have an expert in the field.
Yeah, so a hundred, Danny?
How much was the total?
Two sixty.
Two sixty, it's about nine...
Plus the, so two fifty?
About nine and a half a year.
Ninety a year?
Ninety a year on top of...
For the two firemen?
For, for a rally, for...
Four firemen, so ninety a year for four firemen, and ninety-five a year for the buildings.
But the only way to get to ninety a year is...
It's a permanent fixture on your tax base, it's not one that will go off as your buildings will go off as the years go on, that's, that's the difference, that's going to be fixed.
And I think if Park and Rec were generating revenue, it also might be a little bit different And I think if Park and Rec were generating revenue, it also might be a little bit different discussion, but the way we're structured right now, it's not. So even expanding services, it's definitely good for the town. I totally agree with Jerry and everybody, of course we want that. But it is a cost, it's a cost, and people have options for park and recreation programming, whether they're going to Amherst, Northampton, elsewhere within the town, other places where the services are offered. We either have a fire department or we don't. So you can imagine, from a decision-making standpoint, it's, you know, and no one should be insulted. I know non-essential services is only fun to be when it's a snow day, but when you're talking about budgeting, nobody wants to think of themselves that way. Of course we want to do that, but if push comes to shove... So I guess where do we... Does anybody want to throw down the recommendation for the hire and the pay grade next?
Yeah, chair?
I'm not trying to say anything, but David, if we negotiate, if I had my druthers, excuse me, Donald, but if I had my druthers, I'd rather that Park and Rec went and sat with David, understood where the pay grade needs to be, and they come back in our next meeting. We've extended for six weeks now. I think that gives us a little time to make that decision. If Park and Rec is able to go back, speak to the candidate, and speak to David, and then bring it back to our board, we're meeting every Wednesday for the next six months, we'll be happy to spill that and get placed there somewhere.
We're still in the discussion.
Yes, exactly.
Well, I'm in fine agree with the Finance Committee person. You know, a lot of things are going to happen here down the road, and if she's willing to remain as an intern, at least help to get by this first town meeting, that's August 29th, we're going to have some clarification on what's going to happen if things don't pass. You know, I realize you do have budget money, like you're saying, but if they don't pass, do pass, then there's going to be some changes, you know, everywhere. And I'm concerned about 219, really. People don't even have an idea what's going to happen in 219. Our board and the Finance Committee know, and we're short all kinds of money. And I just want to avoid layoffs because it's a lose-lose situation. You lose the worker, and municipalities don't pay in ahead of time, so they collect, and we pay dollar-for-dollar what they collect as they collect. So you lose their work production, and you pay them anyways. So I would like, you know, the person, if they will take the position and hold it as an intern, and I would also would like David to work on this salary, step one, if they would bring that back, that would be my thing, I would go with that. Then maybe after the August 29th, we could have another meeting with the Park and Rec, and maybe we can solidify this as a permanent position.
All right, David, are you comfortable with that approach?
Whatever the board wants.
So pleasure report.
It is, it is my pleasure. You need a motion for it?
Sure.
I would like to make a motion that we ask our Park and Rec directors and our town administrator to reevaluate the salary base and terms and conditions of the hire from this point forward. Send it back, and then bring it back to the Board Selectment after they've had a chance to further discuss it.
And then that would be another, a further recommendation coming back to us, and we could take action on that.
Absolutely.
So the timing and everything is still on the table. It's just, again, in good faith, David will go back and have a conversation.
And I'm of the opinion that Amy's timeline is what we should be looking at, too. I understand what Donald's saying regarding it to be the vote to the town meeting, but I actually think the vote on the 15th is when we're going to actually know where we are and what we need to come up with.
I'll second this, right, with the body's motion.
Okay, all of David?
Aye.
Clearing the record for this girl?
For Sarah, yep. All right, thank you. Okay, I think our last agenda item is... Is that that last one? Old business, we have the evaluation of the town administrator. So David, I apologize, obviously, John's has extended circumstances, so you only have the pleasure of the floor. So just to try to summarize, again, for anybody watching at home, similar process, same process that we went through with the DPW Director, and we'll be going through with the two chiefs, and the building inspector. So we have, basically, half of the review is on specific goals that were established at the beginning of this review. And we've covered them with ratings ranging from significantly above target, above target, on target, and below target. So kind of four ratings. And then the second half of the review, we have those leadership and management skills, so, you know, attracting, developing talent, communication, executive presence, financial acumen, and like. So that said, on the objectives, the first part, David, the goals, I can tell you that all of the, for the first one, which was assisting the select board with creation of a five-year strategic plan, ranged from significantly above target to on target. And that held true for most of the objectives. I think the only particular one where you received a lower rating, brace yourself. Some of them did not rate you highly on the relocation and organization of your office. So work in progress, everybody's acknowledged that their house been effort, movement in the right direction.
All that effort and look for this because of Jennifer Jaden's career.
Jennifer did a great job.
She keeps me going forward on that one.
It's a work in progress, but it's better than what she should have.
So hitting the highlights, when we get into the, obviously, here it seems a veteran, you've done this before, you've seen most of the dances that come into your office, although even Hadley has the opportunity to surprise you on a regular basis with something new. But overall, very strong reviews, people very complimentary of how you present yourself, how you carry yourself, your uncanny ability to stay calm under pressure, which is almost constant. It's very clear that the level of effort that you put into the job is extremely high, and we also recognize that, you know, you've had it difficult here as well. But like, jobs are compartmentalized, but there are external forces out there, and sometimes, most of the time, we can't control those. So we appreciate, again, the significant distractions you've had, and your ability to continue to get things done and get them done well, to keep us on track, to try to stay focused, keep our attention focused on the moving the ball forward, so to speak. If there were any criticisms, there were in a couple of areas, and obviously, we want to read through the specific comments, but communication continues to be a challenge, I think that was highlighted. And I'm not so sure in reading some of the comments that, you know, I think part of the problem is here. So there was some concerns for us about differential communication, that some, that you communicate more with some than with others. And also a question about the whole liaison function that we've been working under for the past several years now, I would say maybe four, it started, I think, when Guilford was on the board in Florida. Was it before that?
We had liaisons for different departments, but not for everything.
But not for everything. So I think everybody's feeling taxed, but I think that in particular begs a discussion at the board level of how do we want to work going forward, and what can we do? You know, do I need to communicate differently, or whatever, or whether the chair is at a point in time? So I think that's something that we'll put on an agenda, but perhaps not over the next six months, Jerry, we can hold off on that since we're meeting every Wednesday. But also, there has been some concern, too, with personnel. I think all the personnel in town don't always feel that they're informed, or that they're informed in a timely manner. And I think in large part due to rushing, trying to get so much done during the day that maybe you aren't always able to take a pause and say, okay, who needs to know this information, and when do they need to know it? So that's something.
But I think people overlook the fact, if you're making, I'm going to jump in here, as you noticed. But I think people miss the fact of all the meetings that he has with the safety committee, which are made up of different people, the financial team, which is made up of different people. So he's meeting on a regular basis and communicating with the majority of these people on at least a monthly basis, if it's not more than that. I think he lives in Linda's office half the time, or, you know, so I think there's more communication going on there than people have actually looked at, at what goes on and how many meetings he goes through with all the departments involved.
Yeah, and again, this was arranged, so I'm just trying to get the highlights of what people brought up, I don't want to, so...
So you're trying to jump, and I'd like to jump a little bit, too. You know, initially, when I had to do my first review, I was only on the board like three months, and I sort of, I guess, came out, it was like a C minus, and it was sort of a negative evaluation. This time around, I've changed a lot, working with David almost a year, and it's gone to a BP plus, you know? And he is spread so thin, people don't realize how many jobs he does, how many hats he wears. One of the areas that I would like to see more improvement is financial, and we're working on that with a shared grant with South Hadley. It'll free up some of his time, he can even get better in the things he does, you know? But a person can only do so much, you know, and the time is allotted. He goes out of his way, he works a lot more hours than he's supposed to, he doesn't take comp time, we almost have to push him out the door to take vacation time, you know? So the Town of Hadley has been fortunate to have him for the last 11 years, and he's certainly the person that has kept this town afloat, and our vote actually is attributed to him a great deal.
Jerry?
Ditto.
So, as David Nixon would say, well done, well done, cheers.
I just want to say that if it wasn't for David, we'd be in big trouble for the Finance Committee because a lot of great people, and he's kept, he's taught us a lot, he's kept everything together, whenever we have a question, he knows what page it is, he knows the dollar bill, I mean, it's amazing what stays up in his mind. But I just want to say, you know, that he's really done a lot for us.
My comment says, I don't think he sleeps.
No, that's fair.
You don't need to respond to that, that disturbs some people, your answer. Okay, so anything?
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate all the thoughtful comments, and, you know, very much appreciate the fact that, yes, it's been a difficult year with family issues and medical issues with my family, and that not a whole lot of good bosses would give me the flexibility to attend to things that I've needed to attend to. So I really do appreciate the flexibility and the trust that you've given to me so that I can take care of what I need to do, as well as supporting me in the work that I'm here for. When I go away, I know that you pitch in, and you make the communication happen, you make the work happen, you provide the executive and administrative decisions to keep everything moving forward. Can't say that about a lot of bosses in the world, but you all really have helped me get through this the last six, seven months. So thank you very much, thank you for your comments, I appreciate your good comments, but I obviously will work on the ones that indicate areas of improvement. Still concerned about that communication part, I nearly tried to hit that one out in the poll part this year, so continue working on that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so anything else that you need for us to know this evening from the town administrator report?
All town meeting, all the time.
Okay.
We want to make sure that everybody understands it's next Tuesday.
Tuesday. Day before school starts, it's next Tuesday.
Seven o'clock, Hopkins Academy. And one thing, I don't know if you're on Earth is watching today, but there has been some concerns for us that the school does have an orientation for new students this same evening. The good news is, hopefully, we'll get some more town meeting participants as a result of it when the parents drop the kids. But it also may mean that we're going to have some people coming in late, and that is why, you know, I know sometimes people like to watch to see who's coming in the doors, so no disrespect for any earlier articles that may or may not be missed, I'm thinking some of these folks are going to come in when they can, their kids are coming first, so that's totally understood.
I think we took a little hint in the paper regarding the fact that, and some of the people that were concerned about the date, and there's only so much we can do, we can't possibly have a date when it works for every single person that's out there. We did the best we could, we had some timeline constraints regarding the property that we're looking to purchase as well. So in a perfect world, yeah, there would be nothing going on that night, but we did the best we could. I'm sorry if some people, it didn't work for some people, but again, we did the best we could.
Okay, anything else, any announcements? Question to a juror? Okay, question to a juror, second?
Second.
Chair, please.
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody, thank you.
Coming in Tuesday.